To our, uh, special council workshop this evening and thanks for coming out and braving the weather, hopefully, uh, it'll pass by, what are the chances?
No.
Okay. So what we're gonna do tonight, we're going to be, uh, discussing the, um, revisions to the noise ordinance, we're gonna have the presentation by, uh, our city administrator, David Cameron, afterwards, we'll have a discussion regarding the proposed noise ordinance, then we'll open up for, uh, remarks and summation, and, uh, then we'll have you adjourned afterward. So with that, again, welcome, Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, um, well, I appreciate those that could come out at least to, to discuss this tonight. In the presentation, I'll tell you that there's more discussion that's coming, so this is just kind of the preliminary. Typically, what we do, uh, one of the new practices we've started since coming on board with the city of Republic is we do a work session before we do any type of changes or amendments, or something that's kind of got a, a bigger issue involved, and so, we do these work sessions, and typically, we've been doing them before city council meetings, so like from five thirty to six thirty, but like this week, we worked on OTC, and so, what we decided, because the, the draft noise ordinance was done, we wanted to go ahead and move forward with a work session, we sent this out in advance, I hope everyone got it, uh, we sent it to, we gave it to the council first, we sent it to all the, the chamber, uh, all the parties that would be interested in the ordinance, or have comment on the ordinance, and so, we kind of wanted to make sure we had time for you to review that before we had this work session, and so, what we'll do for this work session is we'll go to the March twenty-first city council meeting, there'll be a public hearing where people can still get up, provide a public comment, if you have questions from tonight, or you have something that you want to suggest, put it in writing for us as well, we'd like to have that, talking to the coun- legal council to put this together, everything is still open for us to discuss, and so that's the whole purpose of having the meeting tonight, but a lot of it is to kind of provide some level of background and kind of what we're doing, and, and just kind of present it and, uh, go from there, so, I'm not gonna read through the ordinance, and I'm not gonna read a PowerPoint to you, I'm gonna kind of work through what the issue is, uh, and what the challenges are, because the thing about it is, Republic is growing, and so, it's imperative as the city grows, that it needs to have a noise ordinance that goes with the community, so it's kind of a community-wide approach and address as things go on, but I will tell you this, this is not the first city of, of administration, and this is some, not an issue that's selective to Republic, so, it is universal, and I don't know many cities, even the city has that before, you have tractor trailer parked out in front of somebody's house, there's always gonna be some situation involving noise, and so, one thing that I noticed when I got to Republic was, addressing the issue that was right in front of me when I got here, was there was a noise issue, and so, one of the first things I looked at was the noise ordinance, and so, looking at it, to me personally, just as a, as an outsider coming in, it lacks language and definition and clarity to, to, uh, to the ordinance itself, so, that's the intent of, of the ordinance and the work that's been put into this, so I'm gonna kind of lay this out for you, if you cannot see this, feel free to move forward, this is kind of like being at church, and I tell you that we got, there's plenty of row in the front, you can move your chair up closer if you can't see it, um-
How about, is everybody comfortable, cool enough, warm enough, too cold, too hot? Okay.
And can everybody hear me? Okay, so, in essence, excessive noise, sounder noise, can have a detrimental impact, uh, to the community, in the fact that it ha- represents a hazard to public safety, welfare, health, quality of life, things of that nature, the use of your property, things of that nature, so basically, noise can have a negative impact, a detrimental impact, to someone's use of their property, um, so, or interferes with the rights of the, of the use of the property, so, you kind of gotta define what it is, and what you're looking at, and why we're even looking at this in general, um, but, here's the other side of that, is, just because someone says that it's noisy, or it's interfering with their, their right, you still on your property have a right to generate some level of noise to enjoy your property, does that make sense? So if you want to use your property to some event, and have a birthday party, or have some event, you can use that, and so, you have rights to protect that as well, and so, but there's also a provision, as well as to produce sound and expression of speech and worship, and so, there's laws that govern speech and worship that are included in the use of your property. So, since arriving, I would sit there and tell you, and like I said, it's not selective to Republic, it's everywhere, but it's one of the things, that there have been multiple situations that we have, we had one last week, it talks about it, you go everything from a trash truck, to someone leaving their tractor trailer running, but there's multiple situations where you've had complaints of noise in the city, it's very difficult-
What, what are you saying about the right to your property?
Well, I'm sorry?
What, what, what are you saying about, you got the right on your property to do what?
You have the, I mean, you have the right to use your property, the quality of use, the, the right to use your property, in general.
So we can, we can have a big band?
I'm gonna get to that, and you have a right, but there's limits to what you can do with that property, so going back to that, and I'll answer que- maybe I should clarify this, I'll, I'll take questions of being, so that I can go through it, and if you want to go back to this slide, I'll go back to it and try to clarify it, okay? So, but there's situations, and some more frequent than others, that has caused complaints to certain sound levels, where people are saying, hey, listen, I have a right to use my property, and I have a right to do with it whatever, I have a legal right to use it, to whatever level, or to a level, and then there're gonna be another situation where they have the situation where people are asking for the city to engage and address that, and from my perspective, and the perspective that's been drawn up, and why we're kind of moving to this direction, it is was so unclear as to how you would identify or even quantify what that is.
Do you have the right, knowingly, willingly, disturb all of your neighbors?
I'll get to that, I will get to that, I mean, everyone has a right to protect their property, but I need to get through this.
He doesn't, he doesn't hear very well.
Okay.
Oh, oh, I find it-
That's okay. But the city has always got to be mindful, and this is the issue, and even when we arrived, and talking with Ron, and talking with the staff, there is, you've gotta be mindful, would it be helpful if I used the microphone?
I think so, David, if you would please.
If I blow you out, I'm sorry. Okay, you got me now? Now if I blow you out, this is a violation of the noise ordinance.
It might be.
It probably is.
Go ahead anyway.
Make sure I can, okay, I got it here, okay, so, one of the things that you gotta be mindful of, when you're working on an ordinance of this nature, of any kind, and we should be in government, is mindful of the First Amendment rights for other property owners, so the First Amendment comes into play, when you're, anytime you're working on any type of ordinance, you need to preserve the rights of the Constitution, so the First Amendment is one of those issues that you have to consider, and because of the critical impact that a noise ordinance has on its citizens and the importance of that, the city has got to be very aware and very, like, I want to call it a balancing act, you got, do you balance the use of the property, and balance the rights of a property owner versus the Fi- First Amendment, and so, when we were going into working and looking at that, all that stuff has to come into play, so, it's not just as simple as, they're being noisy, they can't do something, you still have to consider the First Amendment in that, doing that, and so, in our review, and when we was working on this, or even when I first arrived, that probably right there, that number, that middle paragraph for David Cameron, probably was the biggest, and even the staff, the First Amendment right was probably what I saw was the biggest issue that needed to be addressed, that was not addressed in the current noise ordinance. Okay, so our goals going into this, one, liberty, two, security, and three, efficiency, so basically, is to preserve the rights of all parties, and it's not, I'm gonna be very clear about the whole situation, this is a citywide event, so I'll tell you, the people that we worked with to preserve this, David Cameron's not paying the invoice for the legal firm that paid for that, the, the community of Republic is paying for that, so the whole city is involved, so when we ask them to work on this project, and I'll get into it, is to look at the overall coverage as we grow and how to, how to protect that, security, maintain order, but the efficiency side of it is, is with the amount of resources that we have, and the police department being involved, that how can we be efficient with the ordinance in and of itself? So here was the alternatives that we had, and, uh, right off the bat, we had the word "do nothing," and I think that there's been a concern, it's gone back to probably two years that I can see, of not knowing which way to go with it, doing nothing was not working, so doing nothing is not an option, creating incentives, uh, or inducements is not recommended, and quite frankly, that wasn't working, establish new rights, anytime you start drawing up probably new rights, and, again, going back to the First Amendment rights, it gets a little bit dangerous and a whole lot more trickier, provide a direct so- direct solution, you're gonna do this, we're gonna issue a bunch of citations, and just reckless, I call it reckless disregard, so, um, provide facts, information, I think that's one thing that we need to do, is to get out there, um, about the facts, about community noise, what it is, and its potential impacts, um, and then rules and legislation, while this is recommended, the part about it is, and I go to the very bottom and see if I got my little pointer, and see if you can see it, what that means is, we could write it into the building code, that any building is built, you could actually start telling people, which is, to me, is this government overreach, getting involved, saying, hey, you can only use this type of sound equipment, you can only have this type of microphone, you can only use this type of, you gotta have this type of walls, and then what happens is, and in the city of Republic, one of the things we're trying to do is make it more builder-friendly, so if you'll see some of the ordinances that we're drafting, we're not making it more har- more difficult to build in Republic, so I don't want to create more rules and regulations to what it's already commit, to me, seems already restrictive, and we're trying to work on that, so, what we've come up with, and was to, to draft a noise ordinance that could regulate noise or excessive sound by placing legal limits on loudness certain sounds that are audible across prop- property boundaries. So the options for drafting a bill, and I'm just gonna go through it, maintain status quo, which is basically the state statute, um, establish a standard plainly audible, this is one that's commonly employed, this is one that you'll see, uh, pretty frequent throughout different areas of the nation, in different areas, different cities, Springfield just adopted one that is basically plainly audible only, I don't think it included decimals, if I'm just, if I'm incorrect in that, but I believe that Springfield just amended theirs to go audibly, audible only, or plainly audible, uh, it's, it's more specific, but there's more technology out there that can make it more definable than what's already there, excuse me, so establish a standard of quantifiable limits, uh, on sound pressure levels, um, decimals, measurable, quantifiable, uh, demonstrated to be reliable, and applies generally and consistently. So, as we move forward, this is how, this is kind of how this i- is gonna work, it'll go before the city council, on March twenty-first, what is it, week, about two weeks from last Tuesday, at that same time, the community members will be allowed, even at that time, as a matter of record, to get up, express, uh, support, don't like it, provide amendments, ideas, things that you want to change, what you don't like, or, or like it, vice versa, um, we've already had some, like, I've, I appreciate, we got a letter today, uh, of, with a list of comments, and areas of concern, and so, one of the things I could tell you with the, um, the outside council that we, oh, I missed a spot. Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I skipped over a really criti- I heard it. One of the things the city did because of that First Amendment right, because I do not possess it, nor the staff, and because of the concern that I had of just the longevity, the length of what was going on, we did seek outside legal counsel, and so, uh, it's a firm out of Kansas City, it's one that I'm very familiar with, uh, that I used over the last, uh, fourteen years when I was in Sound Springs, and so, they have experts and, and legal counsel that deals with noise ordinances specifically, so, that's who is designated to this project, and who we gave this to, so, necessarily wasn't us drafting it, it was saying, hey, listen, look at these pieces, provide it, here's kind of the context, here's kind of the layout, and what we're looking at doing, and so, because of the, the complexity of what needs to be addressed in the situation, we went outside the city, and that's why I say, when I, when I say we spent fifteen thousand dollars, we've got almost up to fifteen thousand dollars into this ordinance in and of itself from outside council, but it was specific to noise, it was not specific to property boundaries or different things of that nature, it was what different noise levels were, that they've seen and actually have been a part of, or litigated throughout the, throughout the different parts of the nation. So I've already went over, I went up through this, um, so the second reading, so it requires two readings, so the first reading, it require, that, that, at a city council meeting, you, there, there's an opportunity to present, and like I said, already having some of the written comments, that's been provided to the legal counsel, so that, whenever I get them, I'm providing them, I'm not even looking to how I address that, or how staff will, that's provided to legal to say, is that reasonable, is that something that we could tweak, is that something that, that is available to look at, and so, anything that we can get, or you can present, that's why we gave, I guess, almost a month's notice before we went to the first reading, and it'll be over a month before, between that and the second reading, so, any comment written or verbal, we'll take it, and at least, and at least pass it on, and just for consideration if it could be tweaked or changed. Uh, here's the key part that I want to, I want to focus on, right here, is the staff will be recommending, I'm probably gonna recommend a ninety-day delay and enforcement, why? So, if, if we were to, if this, if the ordinance was to pass, here's what's needed, is you're gonna have to buy, let's see if I can skip, yeah, staff will need to purchase equipment, we're gonna need to spend about six thousand dollars, well, it would be, it would be right at six thousand dollars, to buy two instruments, um, being in discussion with the city of Kansas City, and their enforcement side, and how they're implementing it, purchasing the same equipment that they're recommending, that their legal counsel had presented through them, through situations that they had faced, there's two instruments that you would need to buy, they're the same instrument, but one of them's gonna be calibrated, you're always gonna have one, you're gonna cycle in and out, for one for calibration, one for testing, but the biggest thing about it is, is the officers that are gonna have to show up and investigate or deal with the situation, and to get familiar with the ordinance in and of itself, is not something that we can, we can adopt, and then all of a sudden say, okay, it's enforceable today, so they're gonna have to be trained on what they're looking for, because here's the deal, we're not going out there and buying twenty new books of, of citation books, the whole idea is for the officer to know what the, what the latitude and the flexibility is, to go look at it, but the staff will need to develop standard protocol for conducting investigations, so what that means is this, and I'm gonna probably skip ahead, and if I do, you're getting the highlights way in advance, an officer gets a call to a noise complaint, here's what we do, we're not going out there and saying, hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you know, you don't see a police officer get out of the car with his, well, maybe sometimes in my case, a citation book, already ready to write a ticket, they're gonna sit there and evaluate the situation, they may even say to the person, hey, listen, could you turn it down? You know, you're having, you're having this event, it's too loud, sometimes, most likely in the situation, they're gonna go to the neighbor and say, hey, listen, could you turn that down? If they say no, they're gonna call the police department, or code enforcement, we're gonna show up, and say, hey, could you turn it down? If they say, hey, absolutely not, then that's what we've established the criteria for, but even then, there are factors that come into play, so if the train's going off, especially when I get into the decimal reading, if a train's going by, if the wind is absolutely howling, and they could throw that off, in an investigation of any kind, most likely the prosecutor's gonna look at that and say, it's not conclusive, so you gotta consider all the factors, you don't just go out there and say, it's noisy, you gotta go out there and say, all those factors are being considered. But the biggest key to me is this staff, is making sure that when they go out there, that they're trained to do what they're supposed to do, they look for the conditions, and my, quite frankly, it just comes into reasonableness, I mean, if somebody's having, you know, a wedding shower, or wedding, you know, reception, and they've got the, the sound system jacked to a hundred decibels, and I walk over to my neighbor, and I say, hey, listen, could you turn it down? And they say, I mean, usually, hopefully, I mean, we all live together, this is our community, I mean, and hopefully, I'm gonna walk over and reasonably say, would you please turn it down? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, but in a situation, if there's like, no, hey, we're, we're having this birth, you know, or a wedding reception, we're not gonna turn it down, then that's gonna be a situation, and even then, the officer's probably gonna show up and say, could you turn it down? Yes, officer will turn it down, unfortunately, it took, it came to that point, and if that's the case, you're trying to resolve it before you end up into some sort of litigation, or some sort of prosecuting event with a, with a citation, so that, to me, is the most critical part for staff, uh, moving forward, in fact, that's probably what the police chief, when we were sitting there and talking about this, he said, you know what concerns me the most, is do we have enough time to train staff on all this language that's been written in legal terms? Trying to narrow that down to something more simplistic was the key, so, okay, so violation is determined by sound that crosses property boundaries, um, DB limits vary by different zones, hospital daycares, you can see this, residential, you can see the times, has everyone seen a cop, let me do this, by showing hands, has everybody seen a copy of the ordinance? Yes? Yeah, I'm just kidding. So, we've lived, we've looked at it a lot, so, you, you've seen these levels, what I'll tell you about these levels, and where they came from, is not something that was measured, it was actually created through a myriad of, a number of ordinances that our legal counsel put together, from a number of different locations, okay, so, there was no exact science to it, it's the most consistent with the other areas that have established these same ordinances that they've seen, that have been at least tried or contested, or that you're seeing in most others, in most other cities, it does not mean that, you know, it couldn't be sixty-two to fifty-seven, or fifty-eight to, I mean, again, it's something that, again, that would be up to this council to establish, but that is the, that is the recommended levels that was provided to us by council, and here's the key point, it is not a violation unless the DB limit and is also at least five DBs above that limit, the ambient sound level, so the ambient sound level, so again, right, like, right now, there's a storm going on outside, the wind is affecting everything about it, there's a noise issue, he's gonna go out there with that tester, and it's gonna be affected by the wind, so the officer's gonna take that data down, report it, and say, hey, listen, that affected, so it's gonna play a part into the, what, if, if a prosecutor's even gonna look at it and say, there's nothing to prosecute there, because it's affected by the no- by the wind, right? So, and then one of the things that Kansas City did that I really liked, is what they do, is they do a two-hour before and two-hour after in some situations, that they found that same situation, so, I'm not saying all is lost in that situation, I'm just saying that in that moment, there may be factors that affect the sound. Additionally, regardless of the DB levels, it's a violation to disturb the peace of neighboring residential inhabitants at a louder volume than is necessary for hearing, that is plainly audible across a residential property line that is fifty feet or more from a sound source property. I will tell you right now, the plainly audible is a ver- it has become, if I've had one comment, probably routine or more questions about it, it'll be the plainly audible, I would tell you that this is probably, the plainly audible is probably the more common language that's now being added, like Springfield just added to theirs, Kansas City just added to theirs in twenty fifteen, it's becoming more and more common based upon what they're seeing, I, my pres- my, you know, whether it's being contested in case law, it is becoming more plainly included into the language, so more and more of this plainly audible, some people have gone away from DBAs, and gone so- solely to plainly audible, so-
The plainly audible, that is just, how, how do you determine that, it's just, or do you want to answer that later? Just let me-
I mean, I-
We'll answer it later, I'll, I'll write it down, I'll come back to it.
I mean, the, the, the best way to descri- I guess, we'll, we'll go into it, and Garrett anyway, because I, we got, we've got examples that we could use, but I mean, I think it's-
It's in the definition.
It is.
Okay, thank you, Jerome.
It is without question, and I'm gonna get to, in the very last slide, I'm gonna talk about what, what goes into plainly audible, when you're, when you're talking to a prosecutor, here's what you're gonna find out, so here's just some, from OSHA, just some different things, from A-weighted, A-weighted sound levels, that gives you idea of DBAs, uh, we kind of wanted to provide these, I'm not gonna read through each one of these for you, again, if you want, like, a copy of the presentation in and of itself, I'll provide you a copy, um, in fact, we could probably put it online, and have people, we could just do it that way, if that'd be, um, I know we can, but you can see a jet, jet aircraft is a hundred and twelve live music, so a live band, probably when we're doing habitat blasts, is probably a hundred and ten decibels, um, a whisper is forty-two, normal conversation's three feet, so let's talk about normal conversation, so I'm outside, it's three o'clock in the afternoon, I'm talking to my neighbor, and I'm at seventy decibels, because somebody's saying he's talking too loud, it's kind of like anything else, the officer's not gonna show up to somebody's house and say, hey, listen, your neighbor across the street is talking too loud, if it's two-thirty in the morning, and they're out there, and they're just absolutely blasting it, with their, just having a conversation or intense fellowship with their neighbor, that's probably gonna be something that's gonna warrant our attention, officer's gonna show up, but in just general conversation, in the level of reasonableness, we're not gonna show up, and an officer's gonna show up out there, say, hey, you know, we kind of got a call, could you kind of, you know, you're getting kind of loud, we're not coming out there with a tick, hand, the, 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 a ticket book, and I'll be curious, and I'm, the prosecutor's here, if he'd even prosecute, in fact, he'd almost probably get upset when we even submitted it, and so, in a level of just reasonableness, and somebody having a conversation, somebody's out in their yard, um, there is gonna be some attempt to try to reconcile the problem before we start talking about issuing citations, that's always our first action, but again, so, the other types of unlawful noise that are not required by the metering, uh, repair, you can see this, repair, rebuilding motor vehicles, all between nine and seven, AM, if plainly audible, power tools, amplified sound between nine and seven, um, subject to DB limits between seven AM and nine, explosive or firearms, but then again, I can tell you there's times where our, in a recent, during deer season, where we've allowed permits in our code that allow people to, hey, if they're firing a firearm during deer season, in a certain area, that this council has, said, that's allowable during that time, um, construction or loading, unloading activity that's plainly audible at the property line between seven AM and nine PM. Again, this is all, if you've seen the ordinance, and this, there, what the objective is, is to sit there and, as the city grows and we begin to evolve, is you don't want someone getting a call, that they're out there mowing their lawn, using a leaf blower, you, well, we don't use a snow blower, but I mean, we might, maybe this weekend, but the, just the normal activity that goes on, all of a sudden say, oh, they're out there mowing their yard, call the city, there's, there's a noise violation, I'm gonna call them out there mowing, they're using a leaf blower, it's noise violation, and it, that's not the intent, or the, the background of what this is all about, it's really just say, hey, listen, if it's just something, you're having a party, somebody's jacked that thing up, um, or if the trash truck's driving around at six AM, and he needs to start at seven, and that's something, you call the trash company, and say, listen, you know, you don't just issue him citation for showing up at six thirty. And then I've got refuse, refuse for recycling, um, amplified sound in public spaces, if plainly audible at fifty feet between seven and nine, amplified sound in public spaces, if audible by anyone other than the operator between nine and seven, alarm systems that are plainly audible after fifteen minutes, so city hall could probably be in violation of that whenever we forget to turn off the alarm, unnecessary excessive hon- horn honking, and then impulsive sounds, eighty DBs or more between seven and nine o'clock. Here's something that's important, impulsive sounds occurring less than four times in an hour, may not exceed eighty DBs in an hour, impulsive sounds occurring more than four times in an hour, are subject to regular DB limits in a hour, so when you read all that, and you try to explain that to a police officer, to read that for the first time, now you know why there's gonna be ninety days, if it, or lo- whatever it's gonna take for them to be trained on what that means. But I can tell you what most likely is gonna happen, this is the direction it's gonna be given, is say, listen, if you can go out there and there's a reasonable way to address the situation, like we would with any other dispute that we have, try to reconcile it, and say, hey, could you turn your tractor trailer off, it's disturbing your neighbor? That's what's gonna happen before we pull out a citation book. Plainly audible, capable of being heard by a person using his or her unaided hearing faculties at nor- normal acuity, it is not necessary to distinguish words or melodies to be plainly audible, so I don't have to necessarily be able to quote verbatim what was said, but here's the key to it, this will require testimony from one or more witnesses as to what was heard, okay? As with any witness testimony, will be subject to questioning as to how the person determined the sound to be plainly audible, a judge will determine what weight should be given to the testimony of each witness, so it's not just as simply cut and dried, it's very subjective, it's still somewhat that still says, it requires, if the officer doesn't record any type of date at that moment, and they go to a prosecutor, I know what that prosecutor's gonna do, is gonna say it's, there's nothing you can do with it, so the officer's gotta be trained at what the surroundings are in that situation, which they are trained to do already, officers are trained already, when they go out to a situation, they're trained to look at the surrounding and document that, at least they should, in most situations, that's what they're trained to do, but not, and most times, it's gonna be some anomaly that catches them off, like, oh, they should have included what the, what the weather was like, and so if I had one comment that was coming from our legal counsel was, it's very critical that when you're training the officer, is there's gotta be all the background information that goes with it, it can't be, hey, I, I heard it, or I felt it, but there was something else that was, that was going on, you need to have these, these type of requirements on the plainly audible function. But again, I'll tell you, that is becoming the more press, more of the precedent, day by day, is the plainly audible, because some have gone away completely from, uh, as I mentioned in an earlier slide, some have gone away from even doing decimal readings at all, but the reason why I think that's a challenge is because I think the quantifiable measurement of the metering provides some level of assurance rather than plainly audible, because you can see right there, there's a lot more to it than just saying, hey, I heard it. And I also believe, Garrett, correct me if I'm wrong, or anyone else, Ron, anyone else, this also applies to base, that it, in, in the Kansas City ordinance, in, in part of this, it does apply to base.
Can you pick decibels? They know, you can't pick decibels.
Not on the DBA.
You're not as likely to do what you do.
But again, that's where plainly audible comes into play, so I mean, you can't, why you, why you have them both, and why we, you know, like I said, and we're not trying to model it after Springfield, Kansas City, we're trying to place it as to what is gonna be the best use for- what is gonna be the best use for republic doing that? And so plainly audible, to me, there's a lot that, that goes with it. The officer's by himself, it's gonna be hard unless there's two or three other people that are there that, to help serve as a witness to that situation. Um, and the ju- and like I said, that last part, the judge is gonna determine what weight should be given to each one of those testimony. So, um, while I like the meter, having it calibrated, having one that's used, you have two, two different sets that you can use to measure it. These are the exemptions, emergency vehicles, public vehicles responding to hazards. Obviously, the train's gonna get a pass, unless you're gonna go out there and try to stop it. Um, permitted special events, which we do issue special event permits, uh, transient noise from motor vehicles, you can see this, public playgrounds and schools, public sanctioned community events, reasonable sounding of bells, chimes, um, church bells, the best I can say, I mean, you're gonna hear the church bell go off, I mean, that's, it's a reasonable sound, and sounds associated with worship. So I went through this, about as, I wish, I, I don't wanna re- it's better than reading the whole ordinance, word for word, because that one, there would put everybody asleep. But, I'll take any questions from the council, amendments, suggestions, things you want us to look at, things that just don't add up, concerns. Uh, this is the time for myself and staff to take those comments, uh, begin to do the best that we can to provide those to, to our legal counsel. And, cause that's where it's going, I mean, really, there is nothing, even what we do, I, it will not be us necessarily addressing it. It, it, it'll go through the legal counsel that, that the, that the city paid to address the issue, to present it before the council. So, those are the things as to whether or not it's, it's, there's maneuverability. And I will tell you, there is some level of maneuverability to work on it, to, to look at it, but it's kind of, it's, it's our community, it's our, it's our city. So we're not trying to make it what Springfield's doing, or Kansas City's doing, but you gotta stay consistent, you gotta use the ones, and we looked at the ones, and the council looked at the ones that were being used and more recent, and so that's kinda how we came up with it. This is not something to myself or the staff necessarily, we looked at it, we provided comments, provided those back to them. And so, and there's other provisions in here that are still associated with the current noise ordinance that we got, and Ron, if you ever wanna elaborate, or you wanna elaborate to that, there's still certain things that are still subject, that are not part of this provision, that are already part of the city's ordinance in and of itself. This just adds more clarity to what we already have, more definition to it. So I will take any questions.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
I do have a couple of questions that, that I kinda marked down, we're reading through this, and this may be more directed toward Chief, Chief Lawton. Um, does the equipment and the training, how long do, how long do you think the training will be for the officers? Of course, you said the sixteen to nine days, which is good, how long do you really think that, and, and how many officers are you gonna train?
Well, every officer would have to be trained.
Okay.
Cause every officer has the potential-
Uh, yeah, excuse me, um, when we do speak, we need to have a couple, come in the microphone, cause we are taking this, I'm sorry, gee, didn't mean to put you on the line.
Speak loud.
Yes, sir. Uh, in, in regards to the second question, which is, how many officers would have to be trained? Every officer would have to be trained, every officer has the potential to respond to a request by a citizen or by a, a business in terms of a noise ordinance. So we'd have to train everybody.
Okay.
Um, in terms of the first question, you know, to be frank with you, I'm not quite sure. I've looked over the proposed ordinance, um, it is complicated, uh, in certain areas with certain exemptions and timeframes. So I think the best situation for us for training purposes would be to outline some type of cheat sheet, or some type of, of ability for officers to, you know, but is the problem, what are the exemptions, the hours, the times, and go through that.
Okay.
My guess is, we could do it in sixty to ninety days, very, very easy.
Okay, thank you, and, and again, now the equipment, we were talking about the, the, and the training, it comes to a tone tune of about six thousand dollars. Now, um, it said something about the code enforcement officer or police officers would respond to this. How would, who, where, where is this equipment gonna be? Is it gonna be centrally located for everybody to have access to? If we get a call, if it, like, let's say after hours from, not, you know, after nine to five. Will the officers have to go back to the station to get the equipment and go back out to the area? Are they gonna have other vehicles? I mean, these are all questions that I'm sure-
I could, I think I can answer, and if I can't, certainly clarify, so, the, the answer is yes. Ideally, uh, the, the best efficiency for the city would be to have a, a, a noise meter in every vehicle, patrol vehicle, that an officer would respond to, and also with the code enforcement officer, uh, or code compliance officer. At the cost of this type of equipment, it's, it, it could be prohibitive, when you're talking about three thousand dollars a piece. So, the reality is, we would have to determine, there would have to be a piece of equipment available to the police department on those after hours, weekends, nights, those kinda things. It would have to be shared, so officers may have to respond, uh, um, back to the station, or get that equipment from another officer if they were the one responding to that noise complaint.
So we're looking at a possible time factor from taking the call to getting to the site.
Yeah, that is true.
So.
Yes.
Um, now, working in industry, uh, I'm, I'm familiar with, uh, the, the dosiometers, and I know they have external sources that they can, that we use in, in industry, where you attach to the person, and they take it as a weighted average of eight hours or something. Would something like that be acceptable in this ordinance, or would you wanna try to have one, have something like that available?
No way. That's not, that's not the application, that's not the application for, for what you're talking about.
A dosimeter though, that's more like a- radiation.
Do- dosiometer.
Oh, dosiometer, is it dosi- I was like, oh.
Those, those are used to determine whether or not someone working in an industry is exposed to noise that would-
Overload.
-lie over a long period of time, that would actually do hearing damage.
Okay.
So except, in excess of eighty DB for more than an hour, typically.
Okay, so, thanks very much.
The answer, if I could, yeah, just add a little bit to that, um, the reality is, from an efficiency standpoint, from personnel standpoint, the longer that you create that timeframe of measurement or for averaging, the more resource time is used, personnel resource time is used. So when you're talking about, I know you're describing eight hours, and that's not what the intent is here. I just wanna say that it's important, uh, and, and I had input in this process, in terms of looking at the efficiency of personnel, tying them up on a noise call for an hour, if, if that's what you decided to be in averaging, and it isn't, um, it starts to impact our ability to respond to calls for service.
So going back to the training of the officers, would that be training from an outside source, or would that be training inside?
It'd be us.
Okay.
Yeah, internal training.
Because, we, we've gotta set the tone as to what, the, the image and the way we want it to be, I mean, it's a community, it's still, it's still common sense, you wanna go out there and say, hey, be reasonable to-
Sure.
To address, and hey, could, there's a tractor trailer running, could you just walk up to the door and say, hey, could you turn it off, it's right next to my, and that's one of the situations we're actually facing, and sometimes you just make a phone call. And, I mean, so, you know, how to train to work through those situations and what, what they are and not.
I envision it as, you know, maybe three components. So, learning how to operate the equipment properly, and certify the equipment properly would be the first part. The second part would be to, as I explained earlier, some type of cheat sheet, or ability to understand all the nuances of the ordinance, the timeframes, and the exceptions, and all those kinda things. And the third part is just the practicality of actually putting that into place in the field, so there would be some type of field training that would, we would go out in the field and actually take noise ordinance readings and, and, and do the process, so that they'd have hands-on and actually doing it.
And, uh, when you, when they talk about required testimony for one or more witnesses, that could be the officer that takes response, plus the, the people that are calling, is that-
Wrong.
Yeah, generally, you'd want, you know, as many witnesses as-
Okay, but, but the officer could be one of the witnesses.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if he observes anything, sure.
Okay.
Do you want me to repeat that on the mic, so, in case it didn't get on there? Oh, you got one, okay, good.
Thank you very much.
Uh-huh.
Sir, I, if you, can you please grab the microphone, come up?
Are, are, you think they're gonna keep it at the level that they're playing when they see you pull up and start trying to monitor them? Do you think they're gonna keep it that level?
I think what you're asking me is, uh, if, if, if we get a call for service, whether that noise at the time that we receive the call, or the concern by the citizen will remain the same, I can't, I can't say that it will, I don't know. That could be, and it may not be, I don't know.
You've been there, you've heard it, and you told me outright that you wouldn't wanna listen to it, and I don't wanna listen to it, right? A- 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 am I true?
Mr. Mitchell, I think what you're asking me, and I understand what you're asking me, and the answer to your question is, I would not be, or the officers would not be controlling that noise source, whatever it is. Um, so, that could change, if it lowers or it raises during that period of time of response, or during the term, that's uncontrollable by us. You're, you're asking a specific question related to a particular problem in the past, and I think what we're trying to talk about here is the general overall issue of noise, not the specifics of what you're describing. And, but the answer to your questions is yes, but that's not what we're trying to address here. We're trying to address an overall noise issue, whether it's noise amplified sound, whether it's, um, uh, a party in a backyard, or, uh, what, whatever it is. Whatever the noise violation is, or whatever the noise that's bothering somebody. A, a sound from a car, uh, the stereo from a car.
You're gonna stand after, major monitor a car?
We're gonna do what the public wants us to do, and what the council decides to do in relation to the ordinance. So, we're gonna, we're gonna do what's best for the community in terms of quality of life, that's what our intent-
Well, one- We are, and, and, and we understand that, and-
Yeah.
Jump in, we understand that, but what we're talking about here is, is again, like she said, not a specific, we're talking about the noise ordinance that we've, they're bringing forward to you guys. Do you have any questions on the noise ordinance, not a specific issue? Yes, they are.
Okay, then I'm gonna talk.
Can I get a little closer to it?
Yeah. To clarify, what's, what's missing in the ordinance in and of itself is both protection for both, for both parties, is, is regardless, cause there are, back to that first slide, is there is some provisions provided by law under the First Amendment that allows you to have the right to use your property in a reasonable method, that does not disrupt that. When there's no quantifiable limit, it's very difficult for someone to say, well, what is the measure that I'm being held to, so it's just, just to get a call. So I think what this ordinance is doing is establishing parameters to base whether it is, to, whether it is excessive or not. But to just, to say that it's excessive, I think that's what the state statute already says, that makes it very difficult to quantify. And so, to set, to, to, to another party that says, well, what's excessive, how would, would they control it if they don't know what the limit is? And so I think that's why it's important, that's why I think it's better than just the plainly audible, is to have a DB reading that you could measure it against, so at least you would know what the parameter you're trying to meet is. I'm not yelling at you, I'm just trying to talk really loud. Did, could you hear that?
I heard that.
Okay.
I have a question about the, the equipment-
Yes, sir.
So, at three thousand dollars a piece, we're, we're not talking about your typical sound meter.
No.
So describe the equipment.
It is, uh, I'm gonna pull, I, I was getting ready to pull it up, cause I got the, uh, I wish I'd have anticipated that, let's see. Garrett, do you recall, oh, yeah, I got it. Let's see, the STL meter that Kansas City uses, twenty-eight hundred dollars, it does not tell me. They switched this equipment a couple of years ago because it better captures lower frequency sounds, they example the base, and the legal counsel made the tweaks to it. I don't have the exact, the exact model of what it is, but, but we can give you the model. But that's where we was referencing, what, what, what equipment was working, and what was actually being implemented in the field, other than us just going out and saying, let's just go pick one. We wanted to use one that was already being used, and being used in a, in a, in a case where, say, someone was actually challenging that, and it, or it had made it to a prosecutable level. No, it's, it's STL the, the, the level, is a-
I'd inquired with Kansas City Environmental Health as to what equipment did they use, and why did they choose that particular equipment? This particular equipment comes in a package that includes the tripod, cause if you've read the ordinance, you notice the officer cannot be within ten. So it includes the tripod, it includes a windsock, it comes with a printer, so that those readouts can be printed out in the field, so the police officers can have those for their reports and for their records. Uh, and it comes with software, so that the city can calibrate it regularly, uh, so you don't have to necessarily, you know, mail it off to the manufacturer or anything like that. Uh, and so, they had determined that that was the piece of equipment that was best used for field work, uh, and that created accurate readings, reliable, ANSI certified equipment. Uh, so, uh, it, it comes highly recommended from them, they say they use it on a, a regular basis, and they have, uh, multiple instruments. Uh, and it also has a, a variety of settings that can adapt to, uh, if the ordinance were to change or, or amend, you could take a variety of different types of readings, so it's not just, uh, it, it doesn't just do DBA or, or, or something else, it could, it could be switched to a variety of other types of measurements. And I, I, it's a Larson Davis, but I don't recall the exact, uh, it's like a lot of things, it's a PX ninety something, but I can get that.
Well, I knew it had to be significantly more complex than a normal three to five hundred dollar handheld sound meter, so, thank, thank you.
I think the intent here is for us to bring forward a quality piece of equipment, to ensure for purposes of court testimony and accuracy, that we're not just bringing in a, you know, sound meter that we buy over at, um, you know, Best Buy, or something.
So, so tell me the, the reasoning behind the two pieces of equipment.
Uh, uh, one is it's in the event of calibration, but if you had one that was down, you still have one that's in, in use.
Okay.
I mean, ideally, I'd love to have three, have two in every car, one that's always in calibration and testing. So really, right now, we're using two, the recommendation will probably be three. Um, but really, the, the idea is, cause you got, I don't, I don't wanna put, we have three usually on patrol, you'd like to have three in, in place, so that, if they could respond. But again, if they're on a MVA, uh, accident or something of that nature, it's, it, and there's not an officer available, that's not even gonna be captured at that moment, so. But, I would like to have it where they would have, they, at the start of their shift, they'd pick up the instrument, it would be in the vehicle with them, they're not running back to the, to the op, or the station to get it. But, you know, preferably three, but right now, it's, it, for the sake of just this discussion, we've, we've provided two.
Yeah, it's-
Cause you'd like to have two in operation, and one that was being, you know, calibrated, or in test, or if one was broke down, you don't, if there's any subject to it not testing or passing, it needs to be repaired or replaced.
At minimal, it would be two. I mean, and, and what Mr. Cameron didn't mention is that, because, um, code compliance would also be enforcing this during certain hours of the day and days of the week, um, to ensure that they had one, we had one, so that response time doesn't involve contacting another department to get the piece of equipment to it. The reality is, two is, at the very minimum, in terms, it, it's not even efficient at two. It also provides us the ability, if one's broken, we still have the ability to operate. Um, so, or it's not working properly, we have to send it back to the manufacturer because something's wrong with it. So, I, I think two is minimum, and I think, my guess is, we would see how, from an efficiency standpoint, that worked. And if, if, from efficiency, efficiency standpoint, it was causing problems with us, we would come back and make some recommendations to, to increase that. It's, it's just a very expensive piece of equipment, as you can see.
Sorry, sorry, I was late, um, is, was this a budget item for you?
No.
I'm curious about the decibel levels as well.
Sure.
And, and I know that, that a lot of research was done to sample from other ordinances around the country. Do you know, and, and I don't have specific instances, I don't know, are any of those currently being challenged?
There, I'll, I'll say this, there are a number of sound ordinance challenges all over the country. This is not an issue that's not being challenged routinely in court. I mean, noise ordinances are, there is no cookie cutter approach to them, and there's, there's, there's a number of them that are- I mean, noise ordinances are, there is no cookie cutter approach to them, and there's, there's, there's a number of them that are, you know, what they're gonna look at is the constitutionality of, of them, more, probably more so than anything else, from what I got from legal counsel. But one thing that legal told me was, and even talking to them today, is these things are being challenged, and there's, you, you can look on, you can Google online, you'll find that there's a number of challenges that are associated with them, because it's, most of them are being turned over to the courts. But, to say that, you know, that's what makes this difficult, and going back to the first few slides, the balancing act between the use of the property and the First Amendment, those, those are the balancing acts you're trying to get to, and I think those are both the situations that you're seeing. You saw the same thing in Springfield, and even Kansas City. So, I, I think that, I've learned that any ordinance, any ordinance is subject to potential challenge or litigation, and you just try to limit that exposure the best you can, but that's... The decibel levels, and even in that, there's probably flexibility, are used to them, but that's subject to the council if they wanted to amend it. But, 'cause that, that was a range, or places, but that was probably the most commonly used. But, as Ron would tell you, legal usually don't start, they, they provide ranges for you, but the, some of it, it's a local issue, they're gonna say it's a local issue. We don't want to be dictating to you what the speed limit needs to be on a certain street, you're, you're, but here's pretty standard of what we found, so I just want to throw that out there, as clarification. Or, hope, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Thanks.
Do you have a question? Please come forward. And if you do, uh, there, I think there's a notebook up there, uh, just find your name, please.
Sure.
The reason we're asking you to do this is we are taping this for, uh, our government channels.
Is it televised? Oh, but we got the camera going?
Yeah.
Right on.
So, on the subject of decibels, can you go back to the slide with, you had regular readings of decibels, like the normal conversation and all that stuff?
The, like the sixty-five and all that? Like-
Yeah.
Yeah, right here.
Right there. Uh, yeah, so, normal conversation at three feet, sixty-five decibels, uh, next to last one?
Yes.
Well, isn't the proposed decibel level sixty?
Yes.
In the middle of the day? So, I mean, you know, I've got two kids, and, uh, we norm, we typically have two or three never kids at our house, run around playing ball, or doing whatever. So, that tells me in the middle of the day, the kids are gonna be a lot louder than sixty, they're gonna be seventy decibels, right? They're saying that that's illegal for the kids to play in their backyard, football or whatever.
No, I'm just not saying it's illegal, it's, if, say, if it's over seven, if it, even if it goes over five, but at the same time, is I've never seen an officer, or any situation, anywhere even in, in any of these ordinances, where someone showed up and written a citation to a seven-year-old for talking over, that, there's a level of reasonableness. All we're using that is, is a normal co, what a decibel level could be.
Right, well, but the, but the law's saying that sixty is the limit, right? That's what this proposed ordinance is saying.
That's right.
But, I mean, that's saying that kids running around the neighborhood are breaking the law. So, if you're saying you're not gonna enforce it, then make the law be seventy, or seventy-five, or, you know, don't have it be where the, where the ordinance says it's illegal for a kid to play basketball in his driveway.
Well, I mean, we could write it as an exemption.
Well, but they're gonna exempt everything, right?
I mean, I guess the thing is, is in, in reasonableness, what we're talking about is, we don't, even just because we walk up and someone is speeding, we don't always issue a right, a citation, but if we see something, your signal's out, we don't always the right issue a citation. Just 'cause the law says, hey, listen, we have to look at that situation, the prosecutor's gonna look at that situation. And I can safely say there's more times than not, that I would, and I'd love to look at that, and I've even asked that question. The same, the same scenario has already been presented to me, so I asked the attorney, so if there's some people having a conversation, have you ever seen one ever tested in court, where someone has actually been written a citation, and nothing that they could find, that, that would be a subject, or be in there? We only use it as a reference? But you, but you're right, a general conversation would be doing that, but if somebody in the middle of, at, at night, at one o'clock in the, so it'd be like mowing your yard in the middle of the day.
Yeah.
It's gonna violate that decibel, so mowing my grass is gonna violate that ordinance.
But you put an, you put an exemption into the ordinance.
Right, but, but I guess my point would be, if you're doing that, so if I take that same scenario, and talk, and it was involving talking, and I did that at one o'clock in the morning, and, and I'm standing out there, and the kids are still doing that at one-thirty in the morning, then that, then becomes a whole different issue for the officer, and I think the officer's gonna be there, and the prosecutor, normally, they're gonna show up and say, hey, could you guys quiet down?
Right, well, I agree, if it's one in the morning, first of all, the kids shouldn't be outside anyway, but, um, at one in the morning, sure, have a, have a lower decibel level. But in the daytime, you know, have it, like I said, have it be seventy or something, right? I mean, vacuum seventy, so does that mean if I'm vacuuming out the floorboards in my car, in my driveway, in the middle of the day? I mean, that's ten, that's twice, that's twice the decibel limit you have there, it's from sixty to seventy. So, now I'm producing twice the volume, what you're saying is legal, to vacuum out the floorboard of my car. The fifty feet is for the plainly audible, right? The, the decibel readings is at the edge of the property.
Yeah, right, that's what I'm saying, that that's sixty-five decibels, three feet talking, so if you're gonna take a reading in my yard, or whatever it is, it's sixty-five at that distance. So, so the people you would be disturbing are, are beyond the distance, is what you're saying.
Yeah, you ain't gonna hear that, that's why, am I, am I making that?
Well, the ordinance is saying sixty feet, or sixty decibels measured at the property line. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, property line would be the end of your driveway, the edge of your yard, right? So, if you're in your driveway, producing seventy decibels at the vacuum, the officer comes and stands on the edge of your yard and measures it, you're twice the legal limit to vacuum out your car. That's my concern, is the, the decibel level in the middle of the day is unreasonably low. If you're, otherwise, you're gonna say, well, we're not gonna enforce that, but then we're gonna, then what's the make, point of making the, the ordinance? If you're gonna say, oh, we're not gonna enforce the sixty, but we'll enforce it at sixty-eight, or?
I'll, I'll, I'll clarify, I wanna say that there's gonna be a level of reasonableness in anything we enforce, just like we do with every other code that we got. You gotta look at the situation and evaluate it. I don't think the public wants to be where you're sitting there, working on it, and saying, you wanna issue citations for someone talking or vacuuming out their car. And I do not believe in other cities where this is being addressed, that they're facing the same issue, but I'm cer- certain that those same arguments are being made, that they're not being enforced, or not even being presented to the city to even go out and address.
But, it's, it's a level of how far you're above the, the limit, right? So, um, if you're, you're setting it at sixty, which you're saying, oh, we're not gonna enforce the normal conversation and the cleaning, because that's too close. Well, if someone has a seventy-five, then you're saying, well, you're, you know, three times the legal limit, so that's, you know, that's a, a huge violation. Well, it's three times the, the limit that you're saying you're not gonna enforce anyway on a regular basis.
I wanna, I wanna re- clarify, and, and restate, I'm talking about a level of reasonableness, I'm not talking about that, we're just gonna ignore it. I'm saying you gotta look at what's reasonable, and what goes on in, in an average, that, that hypothetical, it, it, I understand it, but I'm not saying we're just gonna do a broad stroke and say we're not gonna do anything. I would just say, the likelihood that someone's gonna call us, and argue that two kids are talking at the edge of it, or someone's vacuuming it, and that is affecting their ability to enjoy their property, is gonna be a rarity. But, I would offer this, like I've said, and like we've got the same le, the same, same questions, if you have a number, if not that, then what I would ask is, that's the issue, what would you suggest that number be? And so, that's, because it's a community issue. For me, what we did, like I said, we went to an outside firm to deal with this. I would not say that I'm a, a noise expert, I know this is a, a community-wide issue that we need to address. So, doing nothing is not an option, so if there is an idea, that's what the whole por, purpose of the meeting, it's not for us to say, this is what we're gonna do, it's kinda to say, what do you think we should do? So, I appreciate the, I mean, I, I totally get what you're saying, I'm just not sure how to word it.
Yeah, so, the issue to me is, uh, daytime limits should be much higher than what's, was proposed. And, probably nighttime, too, fifty-five decibels is half of a normal conversation.
And I think this council would entertain, and I'm, I'm, I'm sure that that's, that situation is, if there's, if there's a recommendation of that, or there's a request for that, that's the whole purpose of the meeting, is to glean that information.
Because, 'cause I, I mean, like I said, most of us are not sound experts, but, um, decibel readings, right? I don't know, I assume everyone knows at least that it's a exponential reading, so a change in ten from sixty to seventy is twice, right? So, every increment of ten decibels is twice the volume. Flip side of that is, every time you go down by ten decibels, so from normal conversation at sixty-five to the nighttime ordinance at fifty-five, that means you can only produce half the volume of normal conversation, right? I mean, there's, I was looking for some sort of confirmation from the council, that in general, you understand the math behind decibel readings, right?
It is, it is a, I, I, it increases or decreases exponentially, whether it's times ten or whatever, I think it's, it's a base. And then you just keep increasing as you go up, but it's not like teny way, I mean, it's-
Yeah, so, you know, sixty to seventy is not one-sixth higher, it's twice as high. And then, my other concern is the, uh, subjectiveness of plainly audible, and how you understand what that means. I mean, so, plainly audible is, my neighbor's air conditioner's running at sixty decibels and the limit's fifty-five, right? I mean, plainly audible is very vague statement. And what does that mean to, how do you know whether or not you're in violation? How do you know, um, how does the officer know whether or not to enforce it? How, how do you know whether or not your complaint's gonna be listened to? I mean, seems like a lot of subjectiveness, and potentially a lot of wasted time on all three parties. That's my concern, is the plainly audible is, um, seems slippery slope as far as wasting everybody's time, and actually defining what's, what is and what is not an issue.
Ron?
What's that?
I said, I guess, I, the, if not that, though, I, I'll still say the same question. The ongoing issue that we're trying to address, again, I would offer whatever that resolution would need to look like, to move that forward, is what we're looking for.
You're saying the on- ongoing issue you're trying to a- address, what's that?
The noise.
Okay. So, there's a, there's a certain issue you're trying to a- address, or just in general?
No, we have it in general, we had a call last week about the same thing, and we brought him up, and requested them to show up tonight, to say, listen, it's plainly audible, we're talking about it, we'd encourage you to show up. I can talk about one, about a tractor trailer that's parked in there, that I would consider to be plainly audible, that I'm not sure we could measure at the, at the property line.
Okay, I guess the last thing I wanna say is, I'm just concerned that you've had to put exem- exemptions in for so many everyday tasks, mowing your yard, using power tools, repairing your car, that probably implies that it's too low, if you have to exempt everyday activities that people are gonna be doing in their property, that is, that are not unreasonable, causing issues for their neighbors. So, that would imply to me that, you know, there's, there's a lot of challenges with actually implementing the numbers that you put into this proposal. That's all I got, thanks.
Yes, ma'am, please step forward.
My name is Patricia Schuman, and, um, I'm not saying I disagree with the decibel readings, but what I would say is, I think you should go more with the plainly audible. Because, by doing that, you would get away from the expense of having these meters, and taking away time from the police officers doing all these measurements and training, and, and all these things that they're going to have to do, that could take, let's face it, a couple hours. While in the meantime, we're putting up with the rumbling and bumping going on in the neighborhood. I know Springfield has gone with plainly audible, and it, it talks about the fifty feet. I don't think a police officer, if he came out to the house, would issue somebody a ticket for their kids being too loud in the backyard. I think there's a reasonable amount of common sense that needs to be taken in consideration there. That's not what this is about. This is about people that are infringing on other people's peace. So, I think if you went more with the plainly audible, it's easy to measure, it's something the police officer can do when he gets out of his car, with a twenty-dollar tape measure. You walk out fifty feet, if you can hear it, and he feels like he's making the determination that it's unreasonable, then you go from there. I'm not saying necessarily to issue a citation to the people, but a warning, no different than it is now, let's face it. Warnings are given now, it's just that you've gotta be able to deal with the situation where they don't wanna turn it down. But at least with plainly audible, you have a specific measurement, and there's not all this meter reading and taking, and all, you're just clouding the issue, I think. So, fifty feet, I think, is reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Hello?
Hello?
I'm Mike Alred, uh, I got a couple things, I kinda like the, I don't like the decibels either, like she said, but that's all on the city council to decide. Uh, on the one unlawful noise, it says, basically, if you're a repair shop on an automobile, they're exempt from seven to nine. Am I reading that right, or am I just?
What do we have again, sir?
It's the unlawful noise, it's, uh, two fifteen, two eighty-two dot five, and it's a... Says repairing, rebuilding, or modifying of stationary testing of any motor vehicle. Nine to seven, basically, I'm reading is unacceptable, and seven to nine shall not be subject to the time. I got the shop behind me, I don't know what the name of them are. They like doing that stuff, past seven, eight, nine o'clock at night, that's one. So, I don't, I don't know what to say on that one. They like popping the hood off and revving it up, I don't know. And they'll scream down the street, and then turn down the school road, going back to the school, hot rodding it. And, the other one was, uh, this kinda pertains to Mike a little bit, the, uh, who's in front of me? Uh, Jordan Valley, their alarm likes going off a lot. And of course, I call nine-one-one, and they ask me, do you see anybody out there, can you go look? Not, not implying you. But I'm looking out the window, and that alarm goes off for four, five, six hours, 'cause nobody can turn it off, nobody. And it's fifteen minutes on the alarm, right?
Yeah.
But who do I call at nine o'clock at night? Other than them, say, do you see anybody out there? No, I, unless you give me a gun, I'll go out and look. Just a question for, I, I don't know, is there a number that I can call?
So, call nine-one-one.
I did.
Um, and understanding you're talking to the nine, the Springfield nine-one-one, uh, dispatch center, if, if we're not, that's not what the expectation is. So, if it's going for six hours straight, we will be responding, and we will be contacting the responsible people, finding a way to resolve that issue, and then try and resolve it long-term, which is, the next time it happens, it doesn't go off for six hours, and dealing with the business. So, I'm not aware of specifically what you're talking about, but that would be the normal way of handling that, and-
Basically, it went off 'cause of the thunder, and I told them to that, but I said, I'll go around and look, but see your officer was-
No, they shouldn't, they shouldn't be asking you to go check, check a residence that alarms going off. I, I will mention that in my next conversation up there. That wouldn't be the normal protocol, how's that, I'll put it to you that way.
Thank you, Chief, watch.
Um, so, yeah, I, I asked the bank if they had a number I could call, or the, the bank's done it before, the health center now that they're there. You know, I'm assuming the drugs, want, crackheads, or whatever, wanna bust in, whatever. Um, and then down on the factors for determination to violation, um, the intensity of the sound, I, 'cause I'm, I'm with Patricia, and it ain't really the decibels, it's the bass. And it's just the constant thumping in your house, and if you can't measure that, I don't know what you're gonna do. That's just my comment.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with the equipment, you know, the decibels and the bass.
Right, 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 I, yeah, like I said, I just researched, and it, basically, you gotta have something that does earthquakes.
Okay.
What the gist of it was. Um, uh, and the special permits, like, say, I assume I get notice the same, on a special permit, something in the neighborhood. It doesn't really specify, it just says...
Let's say the church wants to have a fireworks show, or anybody-
Or anybody.
Or Jordan Valley, or any firework show.
Right, right, yeah. Do, do I get notice if they're gonna block the road content still, and?
Currently, currently, the way we're operating is, under our special-
Currently, currently, the way we're operating is under our special permits, we don't have any specified, uh, process or direction to deal with notification to other residents, whether it's noise or roadway closure or whatever. So, I think if, if the noise ordinance moved forward in its format that it is here, we would come up with a process through special event permitting to ensure that the, uh, event sponsor would be making notifications and then follow-up to ensure that actually they made that notification that was required, what, under the permit. So, I, I don't have an exact answer for you right now, but should this move forward, obviously, we need to put in place something, some process that would ensure that notification was made to, to those in, in a reasonable area.
Yeah, 'cause like, like I said, I mean, most, most times during the day, I don't, you know, people are gonna have stuff to do, you know, not, not the party pooper, whatever you're gonna call it. Um, I think that's all I had highlighted, that's, I was just trying to touch base on some of those that concerns us, you know, like I said, it's mostly the base. It's plainly audible, yeah, if you're, if I'm hanging out outside, yeah, most time it's plainly audible. But do I wanna be a pain to anybody? No. So, I mean, they should be just have the same respect for me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alred. Do you remember the notification? Is there a special permit?
I think it's in the special permit ordinance already.
It's either the policy or it's in the ordinance, it may not be in the ordinance, but there was a policy adopted and I think it's up to the committee to decide whether or not they think notice should be given.
Up to the-
To, wherever the event's gonna be, they look at all the factors and decide whether or not to request that the, uh, event holder give notice. I believe that's the way it is, but I have to go back and double check.
Okay.
Thank you. Now, if Mr. Counsel-
Has there been any, any testing done around the city, the commercial properties, um, mechanic shops, in, any commercial property to kinda determine what the current level is that is currently being experienced?
We did some initial testing on the first, when the, when the city staff went around town just to look, went like, went to ballparks, different things that were going on and just, just looking to try to measure what those numbers were. And I would have to defer to Garrett 'cause he was the one using the, using the equipment to go around and look, just, just to get an idea of what those numbers were.
Well, and, and I'm, I'm less concerned about those, the, the items that lie in the exclusion sections, you know, the, the trains, the, the school functions, well, I'm more concerned about what about the auto shop that is near a commercial prop, or near a residential property that operates pneumatic equipment through the course of the day? What are those levels currently? What it, what's the potential economic impact to those owners if an ordinance like this goes into place?
To answer the, the first part of your question, we actually had originally considered, uh, you wanna call it a more empirical method to, trying to determine what our local community sound level is and taking a bunch of test readings at various times a day and, and the evening and, and the, uh, logistics of that, uh, we estimated, the, the cost would be really high to try to do that. Uh, instead, what, what we discovered and what the legal counsel recommended was, uh, you compare it to an ambient reading at the, at the time and at that specific location to avoid having to go out and establish these community noise levels, uh, which is, I guess, the method, method they used to employ a long, long time ago is take all these readings, all this sample data, instead, they said, well, take an ambient reading and then if it's five over that ambient reading, that's a, that's a violation regardless of what those limits say. So that, I think that's one important point here is the limit may be sixty or sixty-five or seventy, but if the ambient noise is seventy and the limit's sixty-five and you're at seventy, but you're over the limit, but you're not five over the ambient. So it does take into consideration the environment, the environmental noise that is occurring. So at a commercial location, if, uh, we've been doing a good job in planning and zoning, we hope, we try to, we try to plan the city so that you don't have this mixture of, you know, commercial and industrial, you know, joining the residential, but no city has it to where that doesn't exist ever. So, uh, you know, in, in a commercial setting, like you're saying, that, you know, the ambient noise is likely to be higher if there's other commercial activity going on and probably there's higher traffic and so ambient noise you may expect to be slightly higher, uh, which ma- means the level of violation goes up, uh, you know, exactly, in, in combination with that. Uh, so, that's the way that, that's the method to try to address that particular, uh, risk, uh, of, you know, the, the economic impact, 'cause I, I appreciate what you're saying. It, it has that, it has that potential for certain, and we, that we want to avoid, uh, without a doubt. The first way you try to avoid it, have a good comprehensive plan, make good zoning decisions and try to avoid it from that level, but in those cases where it's unavoidable, the ambient noise threshold is, is, is there to try to address, I'm not gonna say it's perfect 'cause I don't know that, but, uh, it, uh, that's the, the rationale, the method.
Did you, did you say that you, you have, you have taken some of those, the ambient noise readings around town?
No, not ambient, uh, when this, when we first started considering an ordinance, uh, we borrowed, uh, an SPL meter just, just out of curiosity, like if I sat on a bench on Main Street, what would it tell me? And it, so I, uh, we sat on a bench on Main Street, went out to the aquatic center while the music was playing and, and, uh, did a couple of other test readings, uh, just to see what is it, what is all of this sound like? And, uh, that is what really, uh, for me anyways, pushed me over the limit of, this would be an enormous task to try to determine our community sound levels, to, to try to do it in the morning, in the evening, and what time of days do you pick and, and do you do it, uh, you know, are you, are we averaging and how long and all that stuff? And so, uh, that's when, uh, eventually, uh, we came across this idea of the ambient, you know, you compare it to an ambient that's at that time, at that place, that's about as, as good as you can do, I think, um, because it's localized, it's at the specific time. I talked to Kansas City, uh, Environmental Health about that exact issue and, and they, they admitted it is, it's, it, it can be a struggle, but, but they do the best that they can. They try to get that ambient noise le- level as accurate as they can, uh, before they, uh, determine whether a violation exists or not.
I, I would think the difficulty in that would be separating the, the source from the normal ambient sources, i- i- if, if that source was unable to be, you know, ceased, you know, stopped at that moment.
Yep.
Knowing what that is, that could be really tough from a legal standpoint.
No doubt, they, and the Kansas City Environmental Health said that it's a challenge they face, they've, uh, but, uh, uh, they, they seem confident in, in, in their approach and they've had success, but, but to your point, they also, they also told me that, you know, there's, there's some cases that are, that are tough, that they struggle with. Uh, they told me they had a complaint about the highway and they want them come take a reading of the highway and they said, well, we could, but we can't, we can't stop the highway, right? We can't stop the, the traffic, so.
So on this, these decimal readings, where did you get this baseline? Is that, was that provided?
From council. The, the, that number?
Yeah, this, yeah.
Yeah, this, our legal council provided it.
Okay, and you don't know where they got it?
They, I mean, they took it from a, a number of different noise ordinances that they had put together.
So this may be a, a municipality baseline number?
Yes.
So this may be, so this is what they, this may be their ambient number that they're, that they're providing us from the other communities, correct?
I mean, they, they, they've gone through a number of these ordinances and a number of that, those levels and that's the, you know, kinda the baseline level that was provided.
Okay.
Well, ambient readings are site-specific, they are not community-specific.
Okay.
And so, yeah, that's-
Well, as, well, for, for, you know, residential, so it's not just a residence in Kansas City, it's all residences or residential areas in Kansas City, it's kind of St. Louis or, you know, Bodark or wherever, so. Um, interesting that we can get our baseline with the police officers, we get their, they get their equipment, they go and take baseline and the train.
I'm Gene Mitchell. Your, your decimal deal is gonna be like opening up a big can of worms, you ain't gonna be able to control them. You know, we, we've, I've been on planning, zoning twelve, thirteen years here and we've had a cat ordinance, you had to have him on a leash and how many cats you got running loose in town? You know, you, you're, you're drawing up something that you can't enforce. Decibels, you can't, you can't keep up with them. This officer got better things to do than run around with a meter trying to figure out who's running the, over the decibels. Your ears tell you. That, you know, your decimals is gonna get you where you can't control what's going on. I mean, it's just not feasible. Just use common sense with the thing. Decibels ain't gonna get you there.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. You got better things too, don't you? Yes, sir, please step forward. Uh, sorry, we, I didn't get your name first, sir.
Sure, I'll hold the mic for a minute.
My name's Brian Penny. So you guys have referenced Kansas City multiple times, talking about their meters and their equipment and, um, do you have, do you have numbers or what, or do they do decimal levels or do they do, um, plainly audible and do you have what their baseline or their examples of what they, they use?
That, that's actually a really good question because I, I think it highlights, uh, uh, one point that I think we failed to make so far. Uh, Kansas City, to, to answer the question, they do have limits, but they don't measure it the same way that's being proposed in this particular ordinance. I think it's a question we would want to pose to, uh, the council. They measure it, uh, and I'm not an expert either, please, so please take, uh, you know, I'm just playing one on TV right now. Uh, I read a few chapters and in a, a textbook about how decibels and that's really what I know here. So, uh, DBA is a, is, sound occurs at, at different frequencies and the DBA method takes all of those frequencies, knocks off the lower ones and then averages all the rest, okay? Uh, the reason it knocks off the lower ones is because DBA is trying to simulate more of what the human ear hears, which is why DBA is what they use in, in factories like you were referencing, uh, because it's closer to what your human ear hears. Those lower frequencies, some people may not, their ears may not pick those up, so they knock those off the average. Uh, but what they told me, Kansas City measures it in octave bands. So instead of averaging those frequencies together and knocking off the lower ones, they have an individual decibel limit for each band of frequencies and I think there's ten or twelve of them. So rather than having, you know, residential daytime limit, they have residential daytime and then ten or twelve limits for each octave band of frequencies. So, for, at the low frequency, you have a limit of like, I think theirs is like forty-one at that low frequency. So that officer gets that printout of what each decimal level is at each octave band and he looks at all of them individually and if you're over one of those limits, you, you could have a violation. And so, uh, the method is doing it with octave band, does it average, so more clarity accuracy, I guess, and it doesn't knock those lower frequencies off the average. So it, it will detect some lower frequencies, some lower bass sounds, um, whereas the DBA is not as likely to do that. So, uh, I don't know if, if that answers your question, I hope that it does, but, uh, they don't measure it the same as, as what's proposed here. I would have to reread their ordinance to know how they employ the plainly audible. Uh, that wasn't a discussion I had with them, I was, when I talked to them, I was mostly interested in, in learning about their equipment, but, uh, that is, that is a good question, I could get that answer to you.
Do you have that in next town for me?
Absolutely, yes.
I believe plainly audible isn't.
I, yeah.
It is, I thought today, I-
Just looked at it today.
Is that correct?
It's defined, it's defined in their ordinance, I just forgot now, wha- how it is used, I do not know.
I, I think the definition is basically very similar to the one we're using. I didn't look to see how they were actually implementing it.
Any other questions? Again, I would, I would, uh, I would ask for a sugge- I mean, what's their, um, you know, talking with legal counsel is you're looking for as much maneuverability to try to make it for our community. There's some, some, um, great comments, I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to res- you know, get them, uh, if we can, um, submitted so we can at least check what that is. The octave band is another thing, we can find out the question about like Kansas City's, 'cause we didn't really wanna necessarily look at just like what did Kansas City do and even what is Springfield doing? But a lot of them are knocking off the, the decimal levels and they're going to the plainly audible, but to me, I, it's, it just leaves a lot of, admittedly, it's like, well, how do you do that? So we had to ask, well, how would you enforce it? So then there's these steps that we talked to council and they're like, well, you need these three or four things and this is what's required, get all these background and that's why it's to training the officer and why I think it's being reasonable when you go out there to discuss it, that it's not just, um, all the factors are considered. And I'm not, and we're not even saying in the draft, uh, we've worked on this since Janu- I wanna say, well, we'll go back way before January and we started on it and once we got into it, we're like, we need somebody else to work on it. But I will give Garrett a lot of credit 'cause he's read a lot of books and so did Matthew and after that, we're like, I don't think we need you guys to be our expert witnesses. So.
There is, just quickly looking at Kansas City ordinance, it does reference plainly audible in the context similar to what we're doing here.
Just a question, so the, the ordinance that, that we have here in front of us, it takes into consideration plainly audible plus the DBA reading.
So it's, so it's involving, it's involving both, the plainly audible and the DBA reading?
That's correct.
One or the other or both?
Both.
Or each incident? Or each incident? There are, the way it, the ordinance is structured, there are situations where you use the DBA reading. If you cannot get the DBA reading at some of those circumstances, then you revert to the plainly audible. So like a thunderstorm with a rock band playing, so you can't do the DBA, but if the rock band is exceeding the thunderstorm, then you might have a noise disturbance.
Possible.
Most John didn't like my reference to a rock band.
I like rock bands. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Cameron, Mr. Derrickson, counsel or Mr. Wadley here? One thing to remember, a couple of dates to remember, March twenty-first, when we have the first read of council and you're more than welcome to come to that council meeting and our second reading, uh, as of now is scheduled for April fourth, is that correct?
That's correct.
So then again, dates to remember, March twenty-first for the council meeting for the first reading and April fourth is gonna be the second reading for council. And again, you're more than welcome to come to council.
And comments. Provide comments.
Provide comments. Do you have anything, any questions now to keep answering, you remember, think about them later on, please direct them up here to us, council and we'll, uh, certainly see if they'll give us answers.
So you said you wanted to comment in writing, you said it first?
Or, yeah, I mean, we can give you, anything, I mean, if there's a suggestion or take, like, like what we like to do is take the ordinance and say, change it here, this, this would work and say, what would it, if you could, if you could draft it, what would you change in it to make it like, I could see that? Because it's, we're all in it, I, I would love to say we're all experts, but the, the one thing that I will safely tell you about it, when you hire outside counsel, they, they do not live here, but they are the ones you've chosen, but they will tell you even on those calls, it's still your community, it's your city, you live together, we shop here, we see each other and we want what's in the best interest of the community 'cause it, nobody wants to- We shop here, we see each other, and we want what's in the best interest of the community, because nobody wants to see a bunch of challenges or fighting over the same, same thing. You kinda like say, "Hey, listen, what do we think it needs to be?" So if there's something that you could line through, say, "I would change this, and it would look good," present it, because that, that's what we do at, at the council meetings, and the, the council can, can consider a potential amendment. Then what happens, because you read it twice, then what we could say is, "Hey, listen, legal counsel, can you get there? Is it fl-" I mean, they're gonna say, "It's your ordinance." But they've kind of created the frame and the framework of it, but I don't think they necessarily arrange all the furniture in the house for you. That's, that's best way I can describe it, because you don't, you don't want to be necessarily in that position, but you want to pr- provide some sort of the framework of what it needs to look like. Is this ideal? I'm gonna tell you, absolutely. Nobody, if, eh, from, you look at all the legal challenges, I don't think, and even Kate would tell me, our, our council. There's no, there's no cookie cutter way to address them. So, we'll take any, any comment, but I'd really love to see where somebody would li- like what we do, we line through it, change the language, and that's typically what we would look at. Yeah, we'll, we'll provide you the, all our contact, just send it our way.
Counsel, any other questions? Any other questions from the audience?
Can I, one more statement?
You may.
Whatever's provided to us in writing, or whatever is there, will be included in the packet, so it is a matter of record. So it won't be like, if I, if I get something, it's all of a sudden, oops. It, it gets automatically kind of moved on to the city clerk, so that, it's a matter of record, so that those comments are heard. So if someone can't be there March twenty-first, it's there.
Anything from anybody else?
No, I appreciate the dialogue.
Appreciate everybody coming. Thanks for your time, and we're gonna close this special council workshop.